I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adjustments to the agenda.
Yes, for the board's consideration, I have one adjustment to recommend. It would be to add to the new business following item J, executive session for one MRSA Title 28 for the sole purpose of conducting a due process expulsion hearing.
I make a motion to amend the agenda as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Approval of minutes for November 13th, 2018.
I move that we approve of the minutes from the November 13th, 2018. Meeting?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Communications and correspondence.
There was one letter of resignation which I'll take up in my report and I think was included in your packet.
Item F, public participation. Item G, administrative reports. Mrs. Wright?
Hi.
Hi.
Hello.
So, Mr. Clifford, I don't know if he's even home yet or not, poor guy. So, we had a wonderful turnout for Godspell the last two weekends. I know some of you saw it. It was a great show. It was a fun show. It had, that show was chosen in particular because it had so many opportunities for so many individual students to shine and have their moment, whether it was dancing, whether it was having a solo, whether it was, you know, some of the slapstick comedy that went on. So, it went really well. Some things you might not know, there was a great review by Steve Peer that was on Facebook that was really wonderful of him to do and he made sure to include every student that's included in the report. And we also had, for the first time, I think, we had scouts there from USM scouting out some of our students, which was very interesting. We have quite a good reputation at USM. Cameron is a graduate of that program, who, Cameron Wright, that directed it. So, that was kind of fun to have them come and check out some of our students. I do want to mention also that progress reports will be coming out soon. We are in the progress of trying to get those out. And also, what's not in your report but I'm going to mention is Thursday night is the Holiday Arts Festival. And at 5:30 is the art show begins and at 7 o'clock is the concert choir and symphonic band performances. And this Thursday and Friday, our peer, seven of our nine peer coaches in the school are heading to a conference in Augusta on the power of collective efficacy and trying to get our peer coaching program back up and running and put in place. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gabbiennelli?
Good evening.
Hello.
On November 19th and 20th, the middle school staff spent, along with the rest of the district, spent two days with Ken O'Connor. The two days that we spent with him were extremely productive and allowed our staff to reflect on our assessment and grading practices and where we can grow from the things that we've learned from Ken. The conversations that we've had as a staff were extremely powerful and have given us some direction in providing meaningful learning experiences with valuable feedback for students about their learning. I'm extremely proud of the work we're doing and I can't wait to see where it takes us. To boost our Keys for Success campaign, the middle school kicked off a month of school spirit with a door decorating contest that took place on November 30th. All the students did a fantastic job demonstrating their school spirit and creativity. There's a lot of moving parts to the doors, lights. It was really awesome. The kids really got into it and it was a lot of fun. And all the doors can be seen on our Facebook page. You can't really see the moving parts on the Facebook page. I probably should have done video, but it's, it's pretty awesome. So, if you have a chance, check out our Facebook page to see the creativity that came alive and the wonderful school spirit that the students and teachers displayed, so. On December, oh, sorry. We'll be holding a spirit day every Friday in the month of December. And the homeroom with the most participation earns points towards earning their keys. So, that's pretty fun. December 5th, many of our middle school stu-, excuse me, teachers attended the educator night at HCTC. It was a wonderful night and they learned more about career and technical education and Skills USA for the middle school. And my teachers had a great time. They just raved about the evening, the program. So, big kudos to Mrs. Bowles for, for putting that on and she fed them, so that's even better. In co-curricular news, our basketball and cheering is in full swing. We've had, our first game started on November 29th. We had some games this evening, so we're rocking and rolling with that. Chess club began on December 5th and we've had a good turnout for chess club, so that's exciting. They're heading to Bucksport tomorrow for a little meet with Bucksport. Beauty and the Beast wrapped up their final production on November 28th and the casting crew did a phenomenal job. It was wonderful to see them perform and they just, they knocked it out of the park. And our show choir will be starting soon, so we're busy at EEMS. Parent news, we had a PTF meeting today at 4:00. The PTF is sponsoring a movie night on the 14th at 5:00. And the PTF is also sponsoring their annual holiday gift giving on the 20th. So, if you can donate, we're still looking for some donated items. And if you can volunteer, there's links on our Facebook page and the PTF Facebook page. Any questions? Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lewis?
Mrs. Gabbiennelli gave a wonderful report. She left out the really important part, though, about the door judging contest, that Mr. Wood and myself were judges. So, it was a good time had by all and what we really loved about it was the creative energy of both the students and the staff and participating in that. And I would say to you that the middle school is a great model. Those students do things that are amazing and Mrs. Gabbiennelli plans so that we get to see the best of their energy and they get the most in terms of opportunities and exposures. We saw that when we did the Halloween parade and they were so supportive of the younger children. We see it in the PTF meetings where we talk about middle school activities and that trickles down to the little kids and it generates an enthusiasm and excitement in our school. Not just about learning, which is of course our primary goal, but also about being there, about loving being there, because it's not just about all the hard work that the staff and the students are doing. It's about the joy of the learning and the camaraderie and the real life skills that get carried from one level to another and it has been great fun. Not just for me, but also for me. We've been doing a lot of work trying to make sure we have staffed our positions as best we could and I know we're going to talk about that in a couple of minutes, but I will say that all that work has come to great fruition and you'll see that in a couple of minutes. Beth Mitchell, who you hired as our art teacher, has started and she has worked with the kids for almost two weeks now and it has been amazing. The transition was smooth. The kids act like there hasn't been any change and that's really what we're all about, is making sure that whatever we are doing with curriculum and any changes that we have to make are smooth transitions and positive for kids. And that's worked out really well. The second grade position, as I said, you'll see in a couple of minutes, has been a joy to watch in terms of finding the right person and working really diligently and thoughtfully with communication with parents as we try to make this change. We've had excellent, and you may have heard from parents as well, they are excited about the fact that the board supported the concept that there should not be 23 children in a second grade class. And when I called parents, and that was our process, we sent out a letter saying, about a month ago, saying, "We're still looking. Please know, we haven't forgotten that your children are in large classes. They're doing well and we will continue to look." And that was our groundwork letter saying, "We're still thinking about this. We're still working hard at it." And then, the phone calls this past weekend included, we found someone who is wonderful. She not only has experience, she has excitement, energy, passion about working with kids. She worked with our kids last week. We saw it in action. We're not hiring something unknown. We're hiring somebody we already know is going to be great with the kids. And the parents to one of the ones that I got the first round of phone calls said, "Thank you so much for all that everybody at your school is doing to make sure our kids get more time individually with teaching and learning." And it's just been great. There were still a couple that I left messages for and said, "In, we held a meeting last night and Linda and I were there and we had a few parents come and just to meet her." Everybody totally enthusiastic and supportive. So, as a process, it just doesn't get much better and I just wanted to thank you for your support all the way along in this. And Linda knew at the outset that, you know, we might have other options and we might have to take them, but that is not the way that it went. So, the kids are being well taken care of and we're having a lot of fun planning activities for transition, which, by the way, would take place on December 17th. We, as a second grade team with me, we decided that if they had the week before Christmas to actually spend in their classroom, that upon return in January, they could get started right off and everybody be comfortable. So, that's the way that went, but what's admirable is the communication amongst the staff and not just the second grade teachers, but the staff as a whole and the kind of support that we had for that. We just finished up assessments and at our level, that usually means a lot of time invested, as it does at every level, but a lot of one-on-one time and a lot of listening and a lot of looking at where did kids perform and what does that do to inform our instruction as we go forward. We are blessed to have Deb Richards as our literacy interventionist and she is amazing. She has skill sets and expertise that will help all of us to look at our scores and look at where kids are performing and sort of make plans for what, what do we need to focus on, not only in professional development, but within classrooms. So, I feel that she has done a great job and she continues to work with new teachers to get them off and running in some of the areas where it's a little tricky. So, she, I, I just can't say how much I appreciate all the work that she's doing. And I guess that about sums it up, but things are still fun, still going great. We'll take it and thanks for your support. Anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh. Travis? Yeah, yes, you would. The other person, it was so funny when I was talking to Superintendent Higgins and I said, "Well, I've asked Beth Mitchell to come so the board can meet her." He said, "Linda will be there" and he said, "Well, there's someone else they haven't met yet." And I said, "Who?" He said, "Travis." I said, "Oh, my gosh." I said, "It never even occurred to me." So, Travis Wood, our incredible assistant principal and athletic director and, by the way, I don't know how he does that. I do not want to be him when I grow up either. But Travis, do you want to say a few words?
I'm a math guy. I don't do a lot of talking nor writing, but I'm working on both. Do you have any questions for me? Because I know I haven't been here, but I actually left a game early tonight to be here, so.
Well, I know that in addition to being a math guy and athletic department head, you also performed in the play that they did, Beauty and the Beast.
I did.
So, you're also a thespian.
Yes. I was ball and told for that position.
I, I saw the performances and you did very well.
Oh, thank you.
Welcome to board.
Yeah, thanks so much. I think the kids did a great job, so, but thank you.
Welcome.
We're bringing Travis this evening because the previous two meetings, he's had athletic events that he's covering. Tonight, we told him he's going to have to do double duty. We're glad we could at least get him here.
Mrs. Bowles?
A couple of program updates. I try to update you on different programs each month. First, our law enforcement students, right now, our first year students are learning a lot about anatomy physiology, surprisingly enough, and how to handle incidents when you're a law enforcement officer and someone gets hurt and you're on the scene and how to handle that, how to apply tourniquets and do things like that. So, that's what our first year kids are doing right now. And our second year kids are doing their correctional unit right now, which will culminate in them going to the Hancock County Jail and getting a tour and interviewing different jobs that you can have when you're in law enforcement in that field. Our automotive diesel welding and marine service students had the opportunity, UTI, a school in Massachusetts, contacted us and offered to provide a CR bus and took our students to Massachusetts for the day and allowed them to tour their facility and meet with different instructors. And actually, it worked out wonderful for us because we actually picked up a couple of new articulation agreements with their college and we do have students that are interested in attending there, so it was a great opportunity for our staff to talk to their professors and pick up some articulation agreements as well. Our CNA students have started their clinicals, very fortunate to have a clinical supervisor, so we're up and running on time with our clinical hours for our CNA students. I was very fortunate to attend, for the first time, the National ACTE Conference, which is the Association for Career and Technical Education. By far, in all my years as a professional, it was the best professional development I've ever attended, so thank you for allowing me the opportunity to do that. Jenna Bush Hager was actually our keynote and she actually spoke to us the day before President Bush died and she got ushered out with the news that he was failing. She spoke brilliantly about the need for skilled workforce nationally and globally because she's done so much traveling internationally and how literacy connects to career and technical education and how important it is for CTE teachers, even though they come from industry, to understand how to incorporate literacy strategies into their instructions. So, she was very inspiring. But the breakout sessions were phenomenal. I was able to attend a lot about middle school and CTE programming and how to institute those kinds of programs, which is very timely for the state of Maine in recruitment, retention and improvement of programs. There was probably 50 to 60 Maine educators there, directors and teachers. So, Maine was very well represented, but it was just a fantastic professional learning for me, so thank you. As Ms. Gabbiennelli said, we had our first ever middle school educator night. We had 45 teachers from all over Hancock County. I had hoped for a little more, but 45 I was happy with. And what I was thrilled about was the cross-section of schools that were represented. Every single district in Hancock County was represented. All the way, I had several from Deer Isle make the trek down. Bar Harbor came. All of the districts came, so I was thrilled by that. And we did get passed out a survey at the end and got great feedback that teachers would absolutely encourage us to do it again. And at the end of the survey, we asked for their feedback about, "What are some of your ideas?" And, because so many said they didn't know what we did. And so, to get the word out was really good for us, but I got a lot of different ideas. A lot of them want us to do and be involved in parent nights at middle school levels because they really feel like, as we've talked about before, parents simply don't know how much CTE has changed over the last decade. So, trying to do some more outreach and get more involvement is crucial moving forward. I want to honor our first three students of the month. As you know, the Rotary Club always does, this year, three times, they're going to do a banquet and honor our students of the month. This fall, we had Glendon Stanley, who's a junior from MDI High School in our law enforcement program, who was honored. Erin Reed, a senior at Ellsworth High School, was our health occupation student that was honored and Trenton Winslow, a senior from Bucksport High School, was our welding technology winner this year for Rotary. So, thank you again to the Rotary for doing their Fall Student of the Month. Calls are coming in. When's your holiday buffet? Our holiday buffet will be Wednesday, December 19th, from 11:00 to 1:00. You can come anytime. The later is usually not as busy and you can be, it's a little more relaxed later in that timeframe. The line is usually out the door prior to 11:00. The students are hard at work on their gingerbread houses and we are continuing our annual tradition of, the kindergartners are currently making gingerbread men for us to decorate our hallways and homemade placemats so that when people sit down, they have a kindergartner's placemat. And then, the following day after the holiday buffet, the kindergartners come to HCTC. I give them a tour and talk about all the different jobs that are at our, can be possible through our school and then they get to decorate their own gingerbread cookie. Later in the agenda, you'll be voting on a grant opportunity that has come about through the state of Maine. This is the Program Update Grant. This is a grant that we have had the last couple of years, but this year, the state upped the amount of money. This year, instead of a $1 million statewide grant, it was a $2 million grant, so we got more money. This year, the allotment that we can apply for is $67,686. That money is targeted towards equipment upgrades for specific professional development opportunities that increase instructors' awareness in their industry areas. So, we'll be putting together an application over the next couple of weeks. It's due the end of this month and we're looking for your approval to submit that. Our food drive, our NTHS and Skills USA students are currently doing a food drive. Any donations that anybody would like to make to our food drive, please feel free to call me and I will arrange pickup or you can drop it off at the HCTC office. Last but not least, I didn't put on here because I just attended it today. For the first time, the Maine Administrators for Career and Technical Education hosted its first ever workforce development conference at UTC in Bangor today. And it was the first time we'd done something like this and every CTE school was asked to bring a couple of students to showcase a program in their area and directors were asked to bring business leaders from their community who may need workforce or who may need to be educated about what CTE is and how CTE can help with workforce shortages that our state is about to face. I was thrilled that we had a good group from Ellsworth attend this conference and I took three students. Sydney Hamilton from Ellsworth High School represented us on the Skills USA side and also talked a little bit about her multimedia experience. And then, at one of the booths was Riley Grindel from Ellsworth High School and Maria Wagonat talking about their scientist experiments that they're working on at Jackson Lab and showcasing our biomedical program, since we're the only biomed program currently in the state. So, basically, business leaders toured UTC. A presentation was done about what career and technical education is and business leaders got to meet with students from all over the state and talk about, "What are the skills you're learning as students that can help directly into the workforce development area so that we can start filling some of these jobs?" So, it was a great day with good business representation and our students represented us very, very well. Any questions? Thank you.
Ms. Coleman Ramos can't be with us this evening, so I believe we have a written report. And Mr. Higgins?
Yes, good evening, members of the board. Just to reiterate what a couple of our other presenters have talked about and we also reported it to you in a previous meeting. Our November professional development days were keynoted by a speaker named Ken O'Connor, who was an expert in curriculum development, assessment, instruction and reporting. His two-day presentation was outstanding and highly engaging. Spending a good part of the first day there, our staff was highly engaged and involved in some great conversations. I think the work and the investment that we put in to bring in here will provide some great information that will stimulate great conversations amongst our staff across all grade levels and support our efforts to enhance our instructional assessment practices. So, it was, it was an outstanding, outstanding opportunity for our staff. Want to update the second item in the written report, where I was going to tell you that the ESA report cards, new ones, were going to be distributed on December 28th. That was changed today by the Department of Education. They're going to be released publicly on January 7th. And the reason for that is, the initial December 28th release date would only have given school systems, seven days over Christmas, an opportunity to see them before they're released publicly to review them. Superintendent's Association made a formal request to the Department of Ed and asked them to either move the release date up for local districts to get a look at them before the 28th, which is what we asked for. What they ended up doing was moving the date back. So, we're expecting to receive them locally for the administrators on December 28th and then January 7th, they will be released to the public, so we'll have an opportunity to look at them. But as we do with any state federally required reports on components of school operations and our programs and our student achievement, we will look at the data, which, most of which we will have seen, but review it and find out ways that we can use that data to inform and engage our efforts moving forward. We have several new staff that we've hired since our last meeting. As an ed tech and special education at the middle school, we have Amy Huff, a JV2 girls' basketball coach at Ellsworth High School, Katie Kinney, and Amanda Trigo, an ed tech at one of our schools, has been hired as the assistant indoor track coach. The one letter of resignation that I mentioned earlier in the agenda was Dick Bishop, who's been with the football program since its onset. Dick has decided to retire, I guess you would call it, and has expressed his appreciation for the opportunity to coach. We still have a couple of vacancies that we're looking for. You heard Mrs. Lewis talk about grade two and we had some success with that. We are still looking for a technology integration teacher. We get to send out feelers to schools in the hopes of some December graduates that may be interested and qualified to fill that position, but until this time, our IT department has been operating without that position full. And also, we're always looking for good substitute teachers, but recently, our bus drivers and our custodians, we are down to a point where we have very few substitutes for either driving or custodian and we would put a plea out to people, "If you are interested in driving a bus, if you are interested in working in a school as a custodian, as a substitute, please contact the department's office." I'd like to close my report by issuing a thank you to all Ellsworth School Department staff. You know, we're approaching the upcoming winter school vacation, which isn't quite halfway through the school year, but pretty close. I'd like to take the opportunity to express appreciation to all members of the ESD staff for their continued outstanding work with and on behalf of the students and our community. You know, you've heard some of the reports from our administrators this evening of all the things that are going on in the schools. You know how much work is going on with our ongoing work on a transition to a full proficiency-based system. Our staff is really doing a great job. But above and beyond that, regardless of which role our staff members play in our school department, they both embrace the challenges associated with performing their responsibilities at the highest levels and exceed the expectations that the students are our top priority. We're fortunate to have such a high-quality staff serving our community and students, so a very hearty thank you to all of our staff for a job well done. And that concludes my report unless you have questions.
Any questions? Thank you. Item H, committee reports. We had a workshop meeting and the following people were placed on, were appointed to committees. Personnel Committee will be Rob Hudson and Paul Marcosian. The Finance Committee will be Rob Hudson and Brenda Thomas. The Curriculum Committee will be Joanne Avery and Abigail Miller. The Policy Committee will be Joanne Avery and Abigail Miller. Facilities and Transportation will be Abigail Miller and Paul Marcosian. I will continue to be the rep at HCTC and Mr. Marcosian is our legislative liaison. Item I, old business. None. Item J, student presentation.
Yes, unfortunately, the student that we were hoping to bring forward this evening, we were not able to make that connection. We will try to have him come forward at our next meeting and this will be the student who presented to you earlier on his scouting project to build the dugouts at EEMS. And if you haven't driven by the ball field and seen them, he's done a fantastic job. We'll have him here, hopefully, at our next meeting.
Two, confirmation of teacher nomination.
Yes, if I could follow up on Mrs. Lewis's comments. As you know, we started the school year being unsuccessful in finding the, a qualified candidate to fill a vacant grade two position. And as Mrs. Lewis said, we notified parents of what our plans are going to be and our existing grade two teachers decided that rather than try to bring in a long-term sub, we would go with larger class sizes and they would make it work for our students. And I think it's understatement to say that they have, have done that. Second grade teachers, along with other staff in the school, have done an outstanding job making the school year positive for all of our second grade students. But as Mrs. Lewis also said, we continued our search and not too long ago, we were able to find a candidate that went through the interview process and met the standards that we were looking for. So, a credit to Mrs. Lewis and her staff, they did spend a great deal of time working with parents, communicating with parents to let them know that we do have a candidate that we'd like to bring forward and that we had a couple of options. But with all of that groundwork completed, as Mrs. Lewis has said, we are comfortable moving forward with the option of making a nomination for a teaching position for grade two at EEMS. So, what I would like to do this evening is nominate to you Linda Van Salisbury as the grade two teacher at Ellsworth Elementary Middle School. Mrs. Van Salisbury is being recommended by the building level hiring committee based upon the 27 years of successful classroom experience. upon the 27 years of successful classroom experience in New Jersey. Committee was impressed by her background, knowledge, and successful experience in the classroom, including work in literacy, collaborative learning, and creating a safe and positive learning environment. I think you heard Mrs. Lewis reference some other attributes a little bit earlier, and I won't repeat them. I would say, yeah, Mrs. Van Salzberry's references were very strong, and the team and Mrs. Lewis believes that she will be a great fit at EEMS and will facilitate the transition of students from larger class sizes to more manageable class sizes. So, I'm pleased to nominate Linda Van Salzberry as a grade-two teacher, first-year probationary contract, the 2018-19 school year.
I move that we confirm the superintendent's nomination of Linda Van Salzberry as presented to a first-year probationary contract for the 2018-2019 school year.
Second. Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much. In follow-up with what Mrs. Lewis said, we appreciate the board's support in us moving forward and making decisions that's in the best interest of our students.
Acknowledge acceptance of grant.
The grant that we're putting before you this evening is the grant that Mrs. Bowles referenced in her report. I did forward in your packets a list of the financial awards for all the different CTE regions and centers across the state, and you can see it's based upon enrollment. What I am asking for you to do this evening, by policy, you're not required to approve submission of an application, is to acknowledge acceptance of the grant, so I'm asking if the board will acknowledge acceptance of the grant pending submission of a completed application. And I'm pretty certain that we're going to receive it. We've received it for the past couple of years.
I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge acceptance of the grant as presented.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Superintendent Higgins, for clarifying that.
Yeah.
Not a problem. That's what I'm here for.
Four, negotiations update.
I have nothing to report.
Item five, budget update.
Can I report to the board that, as I mentioned at our last board meeting, administrative team was going to meet the next day to, in the next couple of weeks, to do our initial conversation on staffing? And we had quite a lengthy meeting and identified a number of areas in which we're seeking to add and move staff around. Based upon needs, in facilities and maintenance, we're looking to add staffing there. Mr. Turnbull, in his job, has taken a look at our operations and determined that one of the halftime positions that we have would be better suited to help us fulfill their responsibilities by making it a full-time position. In our food services department, we're looking to add a full-time position. In transportation, we're looking to, based upon enrollment, and as you know, this year, we have a position that you approved last year, which is a spare overflow position that has now become a full-time position. So, we'd be looking to address those needs through the next budget. We're also looking at, based upon enrollment and the interest that we've received in sending school communities, the potential for needing to add an additional driver. Again, that would be a driver who would be supported by increased revenues from tuition Under our student and staff services, which is where we have nursing, guidance, instructional technology, curriculum instruction assessment, we're looking to, based upon needs from data and student assessment data, positions that we've talked about in previous years, interventionist positions to support students in math and in literacy. We're also looking at our Title I funding to see the level of support that will still be available to our staffing that is funded for those purposes. And as you know, those positions are supporting our Title I, excuse me, our reading recovery positions. We're also taking a look at overall literacy interventionist needs and instructional coaching In CTE, one of the areas that we talked about, we know that the biomedical position is coming out of the Perkins Grant this year and will be coming to the local budget, so that will be an increase in staffing, at least financially. The other piece that we're looking at is, as you know, our carpentry program has been on hold this year. We're working with the Advisory Committee for HCTC to review results of a survey to determine if we're going to be able to bring carpentry back or look for an alternative program. At the elementary and middle school, we are looking at adding potentially several positions to accommodate the increases in enrollment that we had this year, and also the transitions from students from one grade to the next level, and also the potential for increased enrollment gains next year. At the secondary level, because we're going to be looking at graduating a class that is probably 40 students less than the incoming freshman class, we're going to be looking at adding positions at the secondary level. As you know, the freshman academy is designed to have smaller class sizes. With the current staffing that we have for the incoming class, we'd be looking at a need for three or four positions.
All of the, excuse me, all at the freshman level?
They would service primarily students at the freshman level. It may allow us to increase some of the electives that have been lost over the past couple of years also. The other places that we're looking across all grade levels with that increased enrollment, as you know, oftentimes, our music physical education, when you have increases in enrollment, you need to find places to give increased time to students, so we'll be looking at those staffing levels. And positions that we've talked about on more of a global perspective, last year during the budget process, we talked about school safety and we talked about mental health of students. So, we're looking at some positions to address further some of those needs. We're also looking very hard at, as part of our ongoing future move, movement for the, excuse me, the district, not just a STEM program, science, technology, engineering, mathematics, but adding an E to that for STEAM program, incorporating that with our VPA Academy. We're taking a look at what kind of staffing we might need to start moving forward on that. So, it's a very lengthy list. We know that not all of those particular positions are going to be approved through the budget process, but I think as part of our planning and forward-thinking, we need to look at all of those pieces and have them on the table for discussion, at least at the board level and definitely at the community level. I think it was a very positive and productive meeting, and I think our staff members are really looking at what is in the best interest of our school system and making sure that we have the staffing to allow us to move in that direction. And I'll provide you with some information on that before you leave this evening.
Thank you. Item six, executive session for 1 MRS A20A4056B for the sole purpose of conducting a due expulsion, process expulsion hearing.
We had communicated with the family that we would anticipate that meeting being at approximately 7:30.
Okay.
So, we have a few minutes.
Calendar announcements before that?
Yep. We should do that.
So, shall I do the calendar and the announcements?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. School Board Workshop, December 27th, 2018, the Ellsworth School Department Conference Room, 6:00 PM, and that's tentative. We'll confirm that.
I put that on there, and as you know, our regular workshop date would be Christmas Day.
Christmas Day.
And I think the last time we met, we talked about not doing it on that day, so the 27th is a day during the week. I think that's dependent upon board member availability.
Okay. And the next school board meeting is Tuesday, January 8th, 2019, City Hall Council Chambers
And you can't adjourn, but...
We cannot.
We can't.
You can't adjourn because you have one more item.
Right.